Good evening and welcome to the Town of Proctor Select Board Meeting, June 9th. If you'd please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, the first order of business would be to approve the agenda. Are there any additions, corrections?
Yep, taking the skating rink director's information update off.
Okay. Anything else? Hearing none, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve with corrections.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A motion would be in order to approve the May 27th meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Yeah, yep.
The draft date, should that be the 27th?
Uh, probably. We can change that.
Just fifteen days difference, Albert.
Doesn't matter to me.
No, that's good.
That's one of the things that has to be recorded on the minutes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Probably should.
For the date, okay. All right. Motion would be in order to approve with the correction of the date. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Open public comment, we don't have anyone here, there's no one on. So, good stuff, I'll just see for good stuff. Couple things, one, we have graduation this weekend in the rain, but it was great. Um, we had, um, the speaker was a returning graduate from 2018, Grace Tate, and she gave a great speech. It's lovely to see graduates come back who have gone away and been successful and more fortunate, we could probably throw a stone and come up with multiple kids that have graduated to come back and give speeches. The other exciting part was, we had five classmates from the class of 1955 to get their platinum diplomas. So, um, that was pretty cool. And, um, the principal gave a great speech also and talked about the value of small schools and it was all recorded by PEG TV, so you can watch that on there. Today, we were up at the pool for, um, elementary school pole day and it was a great day, even though it was a little spritzed a few times. It was a lovely day to be up there and it was great to start the kind of summer vibe of laughter and being in sand and water, so it wa- it was a nice, a nice feel. Anything else?
The high school, junior high, had their spring concert, very well attended and a wonderful performance last week.
Now they're all gonna be loose for the summer.
That's right. Seventeenth, so it's the last. All right. Uh, the bills went around, everyone had an opportunity to sign those. Sheriff Department, 2025, 2026 contract.
Motion to approve the contract as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, one question. Were there any changes from the previous contract?
It obviously went up, but I don't think they went up much. I was gonna actually check the total and I think it under budget from what I had last year.
I think it was, like, ninety-seven thousand.
Ninety-eight, maybe.
Oh my gosh, right? Hold on, I'm trying to find the right before. Whoops. Yeah, 'cause I'm trying to think of the exact dollar amount from last year. I feel like it was like fifty-something, like fifty and change, you know?
The hourly rate?
Yeah.
I was gonna say fifty thousand.
We got a deal last year, okay, we're not gonna get that this year.
So a slight increase.
Yeah, let me just make sure.
Yeah, I thought it would be more than this.
And I, I actually think they've been doing a good job this year, so. Let's see. Yeah, for fiscal '25, we had a hundred and ten thousand budgeted.
Hundred and ten.
So. And it was, uh, we actually went to a hundred and six, four fifty for twenty-six.
Yeah.
Okay, and the hours, I mean, it's the same amount of hours, because we're still doing it.
Right, yep.
Okay.
And just for your information, I was listening to, uh, uh, the, uh, Brian Colomar's radio talk show and they were talking about, uh, you know, uh, setting the, uh, budget for equipment replacement and they were talking about the city cruisers equipped are around one hundred thousand dollars each.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You know, 'cause I know, we, we mentioned about, you know, having our own police department and they were saying for, for a cruiser equipped, it's around a hundred thousand dollars just for one cruiser.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't see how we could ever do that.
Yeah, no, when you look at, you know, what the sheriff department's doing for us.
And their equipment themselves too, you know, the tasers, the guns, the radios, the everything, you know? It's pretty, it's a big price tag.
Animal control on top of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, so I have a motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Would you like to sign it now?
Sure. Um, drinking water rules and regulations.
So I gave you guys this just because, um, we've been kind of reviewing it, the Public Works and I, you know, going over certain things and because there's so many issues with the delinquencies and shutting water off and a lot of those not shut offs on the property. But if you read the policy, basically, which we haven't been doing for years, is the, um, the shut off is the responsibility of the homeowner and not the town. If you wanna shut off, you, you, you pa- you pay for it, we don't. So, um, I just wanted you guys to take it, no action today, but look at it, review it and see if there's anything else that jumps out of you, just as a property owner or something. But it's just we're running into issues, um.
Do we have a lot of people asking to have their water shut off?
Nobody, no, nobody asks to shut it off. Or say when we don't have a shut off and we need a shut off installed.
Oh.
The installation.
Yeah, the installation.
Or it's a curb stop.
Yeah. Yeah.
So wait, so it's the property owner's responsibility to put the curb stop in, but then...
We have access to it, we have right to the waterway. Yep.
I was just gonna say, for new installations, it's right from the corporation on the main to the seller, the homeowner pays for, installs, per state standards, and then to the curb stop, once it's installed, the town takes responsibility to the curb stop and then from there, the homeowner takes responsibility for it. That's for new installations. That's why I'm surprised to hear you say that, you know, the homes that already have existing lines with no curb stop, they are liable for it. I...
Well, and that's why I want you to look at the policy, because it does talk about new, but not existing.
Yes.
So I think, I want us to clarify that and kind of go through it. Just because we, like, so, so for instance, we have a property that is delinquent. When to shut the water off, the water, the shut off, curb stop was okay, but the pipe, the valve that goes down where it connects, what, they could shut it off with the wrench, but they had to leave the wrench on to make it stay shut off. So it's, so they'd have to go in, dig, remove that pipe and put it, a new pipe in so that you could actually shut it off without things. So that's what we're looking at, is that on there and not on our end, as far as cost goes.
And how would we make someone pay to do that?
I think you would just probably charge it to their...
So we would do it and then you would just fill them?
Well, they should get somebody to do it.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, so like hypothetically, let's say, I'm delinquent. You can't shut me off. You send me a letter since I need to put in a curb stop so you can shut me off. I'm thinking I'm gonna say...
Right.
No.
Well, if you're not gonna pay your, if you're not gonna pay your account, you're not gonna pay to install. That's why I wanna just kind of revisit it, 'cause the way they interpreted it was that it's on them. So I think there's a lot of gray area.
Yeah, 'cause I was always of the impression that that was the responsibility of the town. That's why it was always supposed to be in the right of way.
Right.
Even when we did the water project, that was the whole premise of like putting in new curb stops, putting them in certain places, so they were in the right of way and there was no like, oh, you can't be on my property.
Right, and that's why I think, I'm wondering if a lot of the older ones, or some, that curb stops are up right next to their house, if those were installed by homeowners or if that's just the way they did it way back when and stuff. But we still have the right, even if it's way up on their property, we have the right to go on it.
I'm sure that's why the, they were...
But we have a lot that don't have curb stop, so that we can't find.
Well, yeah, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, you know, the fact that we take ownership to the curb stop, I would think, you know, to grandfather those, we would.
Right, right.
We would put them in.
So you'd have to put in there something like, um, you'd have to pick a date going forward where people are...
Right, liable, yeah, if that's what you choose to do.
Or, yeah, or monetarily responsible for it.
It's just, it's frustrating when people are really delinquent and you can't shut their water off and...
I mean, we could, we just have to, eh, we just have to eat the...
No, but I'm saying we can't shut it off, because like in this situation where it won't stay shut off.
Yeah.
And if you leave a wrench, you know, the people are just gonna go and turn the wrench on and stuff.
Yeah.
And I said, I wanna make a point of going up to that particular property and digging in there and putting a new pipe in.
Well, can we also, you know, when we discuss this, just, um, just for generalities, I know like digging is a different thing, but like, what does it cost to put in a curb stop? What does a curb stop cost? Is it like three hundred dollars or is it like eighty dollars? Like, I have no idea.
I can't, I can't remember, I think Kyle told me once, but it's not like, it's not astronaut, it's like, not like a thousand bucks.
Okay.
It's, it's more minimal.
Okay.
But it's getting, getting to it, the digging, you know, that.
Well, I'm sure that's probably more expensive than the actual...
Right.
Whatever you're doing, so. Okay, so for the next meeting, people will have reviewed and come with suggestions or ideas? For, do you wanna like, for the entire document, you wanna do half the document? You wanna do what?
Parts of it, yes, because just, that's...
Well, we all need to be doing the same parts, that's what I was...
Right, you know, and I'm just gonna say, you know, the, the part about billing is gonna be, uh, yeah.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't think the first part even really neat, I mean, like the definitions and stuff, I think those are pretty good. Um, I think it's, like you said, you know, the billing, the use of public system, you know, pro, uh, what's prohibited.
So what articles do we wanna review for the next meeting?
And Judy, I don't know why, but, you know, back when I had to do the site visit, I made a copy of it.
Uh-huh.
You know, and that one's got two dates beyond this one that was in our packet. You know, I don't know if there's any differences between the two.
What are the dates on those?
Uh, this one was, uh, the last effective date was June 22, 2018. And there was a effective date, October 21, 2016.
Oh.
There was, like I say, there was two...
Yeah, 'cause this is the one I got sent, but I'll look at those, 'cause that would be, that was definitely, that would supersede this one.
Yeah.
So 2018?
Yeah.
Yes, you know, because they're supposed to be reviewed every five years and I didn't know if that was just, they looked at and says, yeah, everything is good and then signed off on it, you know, and the contents were the same.
Okay, so what I'll do, so, um, I'll find that and email it to everybody, but also print hard copies. And if you wanna put it on the first July meeting, maybe?
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah.
And how about we'll talk about at the next meeting, what we wanna review, like if there's three sections or whatever, so, okay?
And I'll include the, that updated one in that packet, so you'll have it. Sorry about that.
Okay. All right. Okay. Um, motion would be in order to go into the Board of Water Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So I gave you guys a list, just 'cause I figure, I wanted to kind of give you an overall picture. It's probably very confusing, it's very confusing to me.
Which one are we looking at?
Well, I was...
The delinquent or...
Yeah, I'm just looking at the fir- the one that start with the first, this one here.
Yeah, okay.
So that's the one I gave the guys the other day to go look at, so they were...
The first one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so they were looking, they were really tied up last week with a lot of other issues going on, but then one of the guys went and checked them all out. So I said, it was like in the afternoon, I said, just go check, like I gave them the top four. So some of these, like you could see that they don't have a shut off.
Jeez.
Um, so trying to find them is, I mean, they have hunted on North Street for that. I mean, I just don't think there is one.
Either that or it's in the road or something, or under the sidewalk.
Um, and then, um, so the one, so if you go, um, let's see, Two Willow.
Yeah.
So it was Two Willow, Levin Garden, 29 Gibbs and 27 Williams Street. Those are the four that they went and checked and were gonna shut off. Shut off Two Willow Street, um, the owner does not live there. Um, someone else lives there who, um, is in good, in good health. So I got the name of the owner, he doesn't live around here interstate, and I told him that he was delinquent, we're gonna shut his water off, but because you have a tenant in there that who is, isn't well, I said, you, you need to make a payment, so he was like, oh, I didn't know I had any payment. So he's supposed to be sending in a check. I sent him the bills, I emailed them to him, so I'll keep an eye on that.
Okay.
Um, the one, other one came in and Levin Garden, made a payment and made an agreement. Gibbs is my problem. Um, that's where we shut it off and if the wrench was removed, it would turn back on. Issues with the owner.
We both, yeah.
Um, saying, the owner doesn't live there, they live someplace else, they're renting, da-da-da. Um, it's, it's all lies and I have a hard time with people lying to my face. Um, and they owe, and so I, that's the one I want the guys to go up and dig and replace the pipe, I don't care, and then...
Turn it off.
So, 'cause they said they'd be in, they came in down to see me and the son was yelling at me on the phone and stuff, and then he came down and I said, um, he said, oh, I brought my debit card. I said, well, you can't pay with a debit card, you have to pay with credit or ca- or cash, check. And, um, he said, I'll, I'll come in Monday. And that was Thursday, which he could've come in Friday, but he didn't come in today either. So, that's gonna be an issue. Um, yeah. It's just, the person who they said didn't live there, lived out of state, I just notarized something for him a few weeks ago, so it's like, and he was there when the guys went up, came out and the guy told him, go back inside, so.
And I was just gonna say, in that scenario where it's existing, the town owns from the corporation to the curb stop, so it's the town's responsibility to take care of that.
Yeah.
So if it's to replace the valve, well, then, you know, we should be paying for it, because it's existing. That's not homeowners. And then the other thing I was gonna say for Two Willow, you know, be sensitive to the fact that, uh, they do have a medical condition, because the ordinance says that person with a medical condition can get, you know, a letter stating that, that they...
Well, I wasn't aware, anybody, I wasn't aware of the individual who lived there.
Oh.
And then I was told later who it was and I was like, I didn't know he lived there, so. So, um, yeah, so hopefully the owner sends in money.
And then where we say no main payment, all those people could just be shut off?
Yeah, so that's gonna be their next round this week, so. Um, and no, and the bad, most of those people have been consistent, and so it's weird that they didn't pay. They've been paying. And then the one on Williams, they did come in and pay, so. So that wasn't shut off.
Okay, so that one on the bottom.
Yep. So I do have to tell you, doing this is, is a true nightmare.
I'm sure it is.
It is, it's, it's aggravating, not only keeping track, I mean, I have a book this thick of all the agreements.
What can we do to make it, that it's not so tedious?
It's just a constant chase and it's, you know, hounding people, making sure they get in here and then a waste of the guy's time to go out, shut it off, and then somebody walks in with a payment, says, I'm gonna pay, and then, you know?
But they should be charged when we turn it back on though, too.
I know. So, it's just, but, so we got this next round and then I've got a new list, but at least, the reason I did this was just so you could see the different months that we sent out to do shut offs.
I mean, that's the other thing, maybe we'll look at what the cost is to have it turned back on.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe, I mean, maybe that money goes to the guys, particularly if it's, you know...
Right, yeah.
So I got a question, with the billing, given it's the actual due date, we don't require anybody pay in advance. We don't, we don't pay in advance, right?
There's no, yeah, no advantage of paying in advance.
No, like you get, you get all your bills in July and then you just pay them when they're due, that month.
Right, when they're due, and then they don't pay them and then you gotta chase them around.
Right.
But I'm wondering if we went to pay in advance. If you got, you want water, you pay in advance and then you get six months worth of water and then if you want six more months, you pay in advance.
Well, they can, they can pay in advance and the only thing it's gonna do is not ha- charge interest if they're late. You know, they'll, they'll be, it's gonna be safer on their end to pay in advance, but they're not gonna, it's not gonna give them any benefit.
Right, I understand, is they got that buffer to pay, they got a due date, they get up to the due date and then they don't pay.
Yeah, then they got interest.
Chasing them.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, this is a date, you, you pay now for the n- next six months. If you don't pay...
You buy the water in advance, is what you're saying.
Right.
Right.
And that's, I don't know if that would help control.
Turn everybody off and then you go turn everybody on.
Well, that might help control...
What would help control is if they could pay with credit cards.
Yeah.
Well, can we set that up or we don't want to set that up?
I mean, it was said that they didn't want to because then people incurred debt.
That's not...
That's not our problem.
I, I think a lot of places do it.
I mean, a lot of people will say, like, people who live out of state and own property here, you know? Well, I'll give you my credit card number, huh, we don't take credit cards. Then you could get an immediate payment, it's done.
So why don't we do that?
They just didn't feel like it was fair to have people use a credit card, 'cause they'll be in debt.
It wasn't fair.
I mean, they're in debt now, there's nothing on it, so.
Doesn't make any sense. Why don't we accept credit cards?
That's why, 'cause they feel people will just keep putting it on the credit card, putting it on the credit card and then not pay the credit card company.
Why is that our problem?
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
Well, it's not, then if it's gonna, if it's gonna improve the way people pay, then why wouldn't we do it?
So why can't we decide, we can't decide to do that, that we're gonna accept payments in that method?
I don't know if that's the board or the...
I, well, the Board of Water Commissioners, can we say that we're going to accept water pay... Right, I mean, if worse comes to worse, can't we set up and have the credit card thing in your office for payment?
I think it's worth a conversation, I think it's...
Well, it's just easier to pay, then people might start, just an easier...
Right.
Well, also, yeah, you call this guy from out of state, he doesn't know that there's a balance.
Right.
Right.
Otherwise, what's he gonna do? He's gonna send a check, you gotta wait ten days for the check to...
Another letter.
And I mean, I know majority of the, you know, the issues are, they're ju- it's a story, you know? Well, I didn't pay 'cause of this, it's like...
People pay on credit cards all the time, they get all the perks too.
Right, right.
You know, a lot of people do that just to get the miles and then you just pay it off. I mean, every month, just because you pay by credit card doesn't mean you're racking up debt.
No, I know. So the list I gave you, this list here that I gave you?
Yeah.
A lot did come in and pay, so, so that was, that was promising.
So are these numbers what they've paid then?
Uh, yeah, what they have paid.
Or what they owe?
No, what they paid, and then a lot paid in full. And then the ones you see that, like, say shut off, they were, they were carried over to this next.
So this person came in and paid that amount of money?
Which one you was showing me? That's what they've paid?
To date, or they still, because a lot of these people are...
Yeah, on the first page.
Okay, that might be, that might be what they owed, so that's the status, that's what I did on that one.
Okay.
So, yeah, I know, 'cause I'm like going, no, 'cause they owe...
There's a row of headers, so I wasn't sure what it was, okay.
Yeah.
So that's what they owe then?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Okay. 'Cause I was like, whoa, and they still owe that, 'cause that's like a lot.
Yeah.
But the second one from the bottom, they came in and paid though? But they're not, but not paid in full?
No, they had a payment plan, so they...
Okay, so they, so even though they missed the May payment, they made...
Yeah, they came in like the next day.
Yeah. So does that count as a June payment or a May payment then?
It doesn't count, it just counts towards the rears.
Okay.
So it will be May, so they'll be, they should pay in June, that's what I mean, yeah.
I know, it, it's a drag, but I don't know what else to do. I know when I first came here, like, people, they let people get so far in the rears that some of them, they just...
Well, that's just it, and it's like...
They just wiped them clean, there was just no way, people... I mean, they, some of them were like, there were multiple ones that were double digit. And it was just, so I, to me, it's more egregious to not be...
Like when they're five hundred dollars behind, go af- go say, listen, you know?
To allow people to like continue, like, to me, that's more egregious than having them paid by a credit card, right?
Right, right.
Because they're constantly just getting the interest also.
Oh, well, when they pay minimum, the interest just accumulates, accumulates, you know? And now jolt, next month, all the bills going on again, so.
Right, so, yeah.
Well, it's their decision as to how they wanna do it.
Right.
Makes it easier for them to do it, and if that's the way they decide.
Right.
They may decide after the first, you know, payment they make on a card, they might say, that's not the what...
Yep.
The best way to do it, but at least they...
Yeah, I would look and see if, like, we can't decide to do that, since we're the Board of Water Commissioners and you oversee water and sewer. I would think that would be within our purview.
I never, see, I ne- the, this manager never did. It was the responsibility of the treasurer clerk did it. She did all the delinquent water, sewer and taxes.
Right.
And then one of the managers wants to take it over.
Yeah, so since...
Not me. Um... I would wish this on anybody.
But since now that we've, I mean, now that that's where we're at, I think if you're gonna take it over and that might be a direction that at least might be easier for you. So if people say, oh...
Right.
You know, if they offer you their credit card, yeah, I'm happy to take it.
Right, right.
Clear that account.
Yeah.
But what I'll try to do for you guys is create one big spreadsheet that has everybody and just where they're at, the status.
And if you do that, Judy, like on page two, that table for four, seven, two oh five?
Yeah.
Twenty-five, I would say, there were three there that are listed that were shut off in April.
Yeah.
If they get turned back on and they, they pay their account in full and they're turned back on, will then names appear again in a subsequent sheet showing that fact that they did pay in full? Or there will be no further reporting on...
If they're shut off and never paid again, they'll just remain shut off?
About if they paid.
Then you'll see it on the report, that they paid, yep.
We'll see on the report, so it's safe to assume those three from April are still shut off.
Yeah, well, one of them, the third one from the bottom, on the four, seven shut offs.
Okay.
That one did come in and paid in full.
Okay.
I don't know how they went for two months without water, but they did.
And this one, she came in, they came in and paid in full?
Yep.
Good deal.
Which one's that, one on the bottom?
No, on this page, um... Eleventh from, from the bottom, counting up. The one above where it says paid one fifty, May 2025. Okay, so any other questions about this? Yeah, I would say we can, um, you know, find out what it takes to take a credit card, you know, what that setup is, what, what the cost is to us. You know, like for the little machine or even the cost to us. You know, like, for the little machine or even the cost to us or accepting them, cause is that like? Three percent now or something, I don't know what it is, um.
So Judy, the information that you get when you're doing this. Um, where is it kept, is it just, is it kept on like a Word document?
The, it's there, it's Excel spreadsheet.
It's on an Excel spreadsheet?
Yeah, I have an, like, I have a file, and that's the thing, like, some, it, everybody does it different, but mine are all under, like, um, wastewater, water, and then I have a delinquent accounts and I have a s- one spreadsheet and I keep everything in there. And then I just move things from one tab to the other, when I wanna give the guys like a list, or change a date for shut offs, things like that.
Okay, okay, yeah, Excel's pretty good with this kinda stuff.
Well, it just puts things in order and I can categorize everything.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't do any calculations for me.
It can, it can.
Oh, it can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so the, um, the water rate for FY twenty-six. Do you have a recommendation?
Well, I know we talked earlier about keeping it at the same rate as it was last year.
Yeah.
Cause of the bond.
Yeah. And so if we cat, if we keep water at five forty-five.
Mm-hmm.
That will, will be fine within the.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Cause I just, I mean, that's, I, I think everybody kinda voted on that before without actually signing these, so. Um, but my, uh, my biggest thing was, you know, looking at the commercial versus, you know, residential and adding people and kind of re- reviewing those and saying, hey, wait a minute, this one's at this and, you know.
Yeah, so how does that work, cause the third one down, we know that's not what it can be at, cause we already agreed that it was.
Right.
One. I mean.
But, yeah, cause I, well, when they got it down to that, it was, that's what they, that's what the agreement was.
So it has to be one.
No, it was at point nine three.
Point nine three, point nine three.
We agreed to that.
To point nine three?
Yeah.
Yeah, but. W- we only charge in whole numbers, so.
Right, but she does it somehow, she calculates it out.
So.
So we can never change that to one?
Yes, when we redo the ordinance, we can, we can relook at everybody to make sure they comply.
Right, but you could do that, but you'd also have to. I don't know.
Yeah, it'd be a snag with the.
I don't know how, how you calculate.
Yeah.
I thought that was horseradish to begin with.
Yeah.
I'll say it.
Right.
We, we calculate in whole number units, I mean, that's no different than saying, I live in a house with six people and you live in a house as a single person. So if I have one unit, should yours be calculated at point?
Right.
You know, seven, two?
Yep.
I mean, it doesn't, to me, that, that's the path you're stop, stepping down, so. I don't know, I, I think it should be, there should be a one, I, I, I don't think that we're obliged to that forever.
Right, I don't, I.
But the ordinance that drove us to end up with that point nine three hasn't been changed. So their argument that they used to get the point nine three is still legitimate.
But I, I'm just, I.
But I, I'm with you with that on Lisa, but I think we have to redo the ordinance.
I think when you have a business and you're paying the same like that or less than.
Yeah, it should never be less than.
That's.
Definitely.
That's, um.
We just can't work with that number.
It's ingenuous.
So the two papers that we're seeing here, each to me, look identical.
Well, one is sewer and one is water.
Just the prices are different.
Okay, yeah, right.
Yeah, it's same businesses and. And some of these that are weird, like the four point four, six point three, is because I looked at what they're being charged and I just divided it. And that's what I got, so.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we could easily say, okay, you're gonna be charged for.
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand the high school either, that was Stan, that didn't make any sense.
And again, once we do the ordinance, it will be clear.
As what?
Cause why he changed it isn't even clear, he changed it because he said there are showers in the high school, it doesn't make any difference if you use them or not. So that's how, that's how it jumped up.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, but we get to address that when we look at the ordinance.
I don't know, I, once again, I don't understand how you end up, it's, how do you have six point three?
Yeah, that was based on, again, there was the old calculation method that you used for calculating how much water was used and they said, uh.
No, this is after Stan was here, he changed it to six point three, that was.
Okay, I don't know why his.
I just think the whole way we calculate is, is crazy, you know?
I mean, no one should be less than a single family home.
I agree with you.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
As a minimum, everybody should be paying one base unit.
Yeah.
And then businesses are in a different, totally different category and when you have fifteen, twenty employees, you shouldn't be paying one unit. So that's what I think.
Yeah, I think you should be at least. Five employ, it should be like five, ten, fifteen, something like that, so. I mean, you, you don't wanna be punitive to small businesses, but I don't understand also, wa- you know, water, how you have less in sewer than you have in water too, for some, that doesn't make sense to me either, but some, some of them are.
Well, the school.
Some of them are the same, some of them are not.
Yeah.
So it, that, that is. I mean, I've always thought that was odd too, but.
Well, you've asked me, Lisa.
So if you look at the water.
One, yeah.
And you have, let's say, six point three is the user, and you look at the sewer and it's five point eight. Or it's.
Mine are the same.
Well, let's, can I stop for one second? There's nothing on this paper that differentiates water and sewer, not that I'm reading.
The top.
Top.
The heading.
Water system, sewer system.
Oh, everybody, they have, you have, they have, we're looking at the.
Did you guys get the right?
So what, we're using the ones that are on the table.
Okay, okay.
Are you using the ones that are on the table or in your packet? We're using the ones on the table.
Okay, I got the, I'm using the one in my packet.
Okay, so we're using the ones from the table.
So the only difference between the water and sewer is the schools.
Yeah.
And is that because dur- well, that still doesn't make any sense, but during the summer, no one's really there, I mean. I don't know. I'm not trying to increase the cost, trust me.
Right.
Cause then I'm gonna explain that in another meeting, but I, I'm just trying to understand the the rationale, I guess, and the other thing is, I mean, and to be able to change some of these, like, you need to have. Um, like, we, we need to know, and I, I, I don't know, like, how do you get that information, like, how many people work next door here, how many people work, you know?
Right.
So, like, we know, like, let's say, a geology, there's like three people.
Right.
Um, you know, and Johnson Marvel's a little different because they are doing, but let's say, and then what do you do, like, when you have, like, a building, let's say, like, across the road, that has multiple businesses in it, do you count every, if we set some kind of, like, you know, five employees, then is that, does every business get re- um, do you start over, so one business has two people, one business has four people. Does that count as five and then you go up the tier, or is it, nope, they only have two, they only have three?
Well, it depends on who owns the building and what they're doing with it, if he's running the building and he's renting out spaces and he's paying the water and sewer, then we chart, I think he has to figure out how he divides it amongst those businesses, we just look at, there's a business with five, yeah, five employees.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it can't, you couldn't just say a business with five employees, you would have to say a facility. Because they could say they have five businesses and each business has three people. So if you said it was a business with five employees, then that would negate it, because.
Right, so, well, uh, it, okay, then you'd say a facility with.
Yeah, or a property.
Right, with fifteen people.
Right, I mean.
Yes.
That would have been, that would be my argument.
And I keep thinking of sixty-one Maine, what's gonna happen there, are there gonna be three different buildings or three different businesses on each floor?
Yeah, you have no idea.
My guess is nothing.
We gotta redo the ordinance such that it can address those situations, there's a lot of discussion to be had. And that's gonna be in the new ord- updated ordinance.
With the ordinance, what constitutes one?
That's, again.
One should be the base, one should be water to your building, in my opinion, or, you know, water to a structure on every, yeah, if I have five structures on my property and each structure I have water to, each one should have a minimum cost of one, that, that should just be like the general, just like when you have electric, there's a base fee. Whether my house is vacant or not, that I'm paying to have electric come to that house, right?
Yeah.
Right. Well, without looking at it, is it occupants or number of?
It's a number of gallons used.
You've gotta have a starting thing with this.
Yeah, but I, I think you should say one is your base.
It's very confusing the way they do it, it's like, so residential is four hundred fifty gallons per day, that's what they assume for a residential single. So then they think of one EU, so then anything, a duplex then would be nine hundred or two. So, and it, they break it down and it's the most confusing calculation there is.
I'd have to read it, look at.
Yes, that's the one thing you're gonna find out in here, is Procter does not do any usage, gallonage calculations.
Well, for use, they use it to calculate, they don't.
No, that was what we got, the issues with Zion.
That's what it used to say in it.
So it's almost like, do you start with that and then create the ordinance, or do you start with the ordinance and just rewrite that part?
Yes, this is, I have this, they're going by bedroom.
Yeah, I mean, when you look way back, it's like, how many baths, how many washing machines?
Dishwashers, sinks.
Laboratories.
And who knows all that, nobody knows.
Well, they would go through and they would inventory it, so.
This is from the ordinance. Water use in Procter is not metered, rate pairs, I build a base rate plus extra fees for additional facilities and equipment. So everybody is just job, all residential's, uh, and it defines what a residential unit is, it's a one family.
Yeah.
They're charged one base unit, and then it's in this document, the rate schedule, which defines it as a EU. That's where we got into some trouble, is they're defining it as a EU, in, in the industry, a EU is associated with a a, a four hundred fifty gallon per minute or per day usage for a single family.
Yeah.
And so, uh, uh, that, you know, should have been cleared up on, on this document.
And that makes no sa- cause a single family of eight.
Well, that's what we.
Is paying the same as a single family of one level.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And.
Okay, so that is a discussion to have.
Yes.
In July, so tonight.
Oh, we, we've gotta set this.
No, 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 I was gonna say, tonight the discussion is to set the fee.
Okay, yeah, cause we gotta do that by June thirtieth, so.
So, so if we leave the, um, water at five forty-five. Which is the same as it currently is.
Yes, and.
Is there a motion to set the FY twenty-six water rate at five forty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right. Anything else for water? Motion would be in order to move into the Board of Sewerage Commissioners.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, so now you have the one for sewer. And the suggested rate is five thirty. And last year it was.
Five thirty, no, five thirty.
Five thirty, okay, so it would, there would be no increase.
Okay.
Any, any discussion over that, and then the following year we'll have an increase because the bond will then start into play. So motion would be in order to set the FY twenty-six sewer rate at five thirty, which is no increase from FY twenty-five.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right, aye.
Motion passes unanimously, anything else for sewer? Nope. All right, so for the next meeting, we'll have something about credit cards, we'll have the updated water, um, ordinance to review. And then we'll decide what we're going to review for the July meeting, right?
Yep.
Okay. Um, motion would be in order to leave the Board of Sewerage Commissioners and re-enter the regular select board meeting.
So, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Sheriff's Report. Any questions about the Sheriff's Report?
I'm seeing him more, it seems like.
Yeah.
Maybe it's just timing and the VSP is around a lot.
Yeah, they are.
Well, they put the signs up here all of a sudden, everybody was here, it seemed like.
Oh, what sign, the?
Oh, that you could.
Close road?
Yeah.
Yeah, that really messed people up.
Everybody was like, at one point, Pittsburgh was here, Rottlin was here, it was like.
You know, it'd be nice if the state actually reached out to the towns that it was impacting, because so many people, like, I had no idea, if I didn't see the Santa Rottlin sign that Route three was closed, and people called me, came to see me, is it closed, where is it closed? How do I get here, and I'm like, it's not closed, I said, it's just at the intersection of three and seven, so, you know, but it is, it's.
Well, at least, at least they put it down there further, the last time they didn't, they didn't do it till, like, the library or the triangle.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, you had all these semis trying to turn around the triangle, so.
They didn't have the electric sign before the exit in West Rottlin, Route three, you take Route seven.
But the, the last thing they did, it was kinda sketchy.
Washy.
Yeah, right, and I think we had every single one of them for Memorial Day parade.
Yeah, we had five officers here for the parade.
Five cars?
Five officers, three cars and, well, no, was it three cars or four cars?
Uh, I think.
Four cars, and then one car had two officers in it.
Yeah, yeah, it was, they must have thought it was.
We felt, we felt good at that parade.
Sunday, there was gonna be no issues, so.
And he's been co- they'll come in to see me and stuff, you know, tell me.
They're much more receptive and, uh, like the little meeting we had about the other issue. I felt like in the past, sometimes they were, it was all like just like this, and I felt like he was like, yep, we're gonna figure it out. What we can do to make it work for you, so.
And I think they've worked with us cleaning up the reports.
Yeah, yeah.
Definitely.
Yeah, I think it's much better, we have a better relationship, so, all right. Manager's Report.
All right, um, so I received two quotes for repaving E Street when I wrote this, um, I've actually received three. Um, and so they're pretty, one was way off the charts, the other two were off by like a hundred dollars. So I reached out to those two today to see what their start date could be, to see who could come sooner.
Yeah.
Rather than later, one got back to me tonight and, um, it was June twentieth or the following week, and the other one hasn't gotten back to me yet. I'm, I'm thinking possibly the other one could do it sooner, but I'm not positive, so.
So which one could do it, this, uh, they're both the.
Um, well, G, GW's not on here, they're the ones who gave me the quote after, and, um, they're the ones who gave me a.
Oh, the soon.
This one as, um, compatible to, uh, Wilt paving.
Okay, do we need, can we have, like, our guys flag, or?
Yeah, they are gonna flag.
I was gonna say, that's a big savings.
Yeah, they're gonna flag, yeah.
It shouldn't be too much of a job to do that, I mean, it's not.
It's just, it's, it's on a, it's on a knoll, cause it's part of the E Street and then, um, Pat Street.
Yeah.
So you'd have, you have to pat, yeah, plus, um, they've gotta tear it all out, dig it and put in five layers. Five inches of ceiling, just cause it's such a highly traveled road. Um, so I submitted the LMP, it was approved and uploaded into the flood ready, what you guys approved last week. Um, Timbercraft's going to mark the Pittsburgh unit of the Proctor pop- property, um, and start the sale process on that section as well. He said as long as he's in there and we're still getting decent pricing and stuff for lumber and timber. That he's so, just soon go in there and market, so I said, yeah, go ahead, so. He's gonna do that, too. And they've been trying to get back up there to finish. The other section has just been so wet.
What was the finish date, projected finish date?
Um, it was the spring, prob- it was probably like May, June, but. Yes.
And I think when we're done, we need to, um, invest in a gate for the landing, so when we're done, we can.
Yeah, we talked about, um, they were gonna put something across there so people couldn't, even if they lay the log or something, so that people can't drive over it.
Yeah, we need to do something, because otherwise landings start to become.
Yeah, party.
I was gonna say dumping spots.
Some logs laid across there.
Yeah.
Yeah, somebody dumped four tires or three tires past there the other day, by some guy's house, uh, our guys went and picked them up, so. Um, let's see, uh, pool was open today, Lisa addressed that. Um, Lester's grand list went from hundred and twenty-six million, two hundred thirty-eight thousand, five hundred eighty dollars to. One twenty-six, four thirty-two, nine ninety-five. So it's only a difference of two hundred thousand. She was a little alarmed because of. Some issues with the state and what they passed, that it was gonna be outrageous and stuff, but it fared pretty well for us, it wasn't too bad. And I did post the, um, grand list on our website, the link, and there's also a notice to all taxpayers, that's also out there. And then another grand list document that the assessors gave to me, so. One's on the cover page for the letter to the taxpayers, the other two are under the assessors tab for information. Uh, sprayed mosquitoes on Wednesday, um, I still have quite a few complaints that there's still a lot of mosquitoes around, and there are actually.
There are hatchling, yes.
Yeah, so, um, but they missed a few streets, so, um, I reached out to them and they said they had new drivers, that was their first night. So they may have missed and stuff, but Facebook kinda lit up, of course, and, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I talked with Carrie this afternoon.
Yeah, so I'm hoping they get back out there again.
Well, the other thing is, people need to make sure that they don't buckets and all kinds of flower pots and things that are.
Right, and if they don't wanna be sprayed, call, contact them, you know, they've gotta make that effort to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, we've got a meeting Wednesday night, so.
Okay.
But I know, she said they haven't seen the amount of mosquitoes in these traps.
Oh, I know. Cause they sprayed out in Leicester and Leicester, so.
They have, haven't.
Tons of mosquitoes.
They've seen, uh, you know, a stack of dead mosquitoes in these traps, of, you know. I don't know exactly how round they are, but.
Compared to last year, more, there's a lot more this year. Last year, they hardly had any.
Yeah. Well, you can tell now, we had them last year, we didn't have any.
No.
And this year, uh, there's, you can't go outside.
There weren't any last year, it was weird, and they hardly sprayed either.
Yeah.
And.
But they sprayed in Leicester, I think, um, Thursday night or Wednesday.
Leicester.
Yeah, and then someone said they were in Leicester this weekend and, and they were everywhere.
Yeah. And I was just gonna say, Judy, if somebody's mentioned a street that was missed, make sure that information is passed on to OCW.
I did, I gave it to them.
By, by street names, yes, that way there, they can make sure.
Now I gave it to them.
That is.
Have that.
And then mentioning that, the, you know, the, the traps are set out for a twenty-four hour period, and they had one. Uh, they didn't count everyone, they, they. Tried to get numbers by looking at the volumes, and they estimate it was five thousand mosquitoes in that one trap in a twenty-four hour period.
Wow.
Yeah, it was unbelievable.
Wow.
Yeah.
Well, I was at my daughter's in Rottlin the other night, and I'm feeling it now, cause my legs, they're all bit up, it's like, they're like giant mosquitoes.
Because they, they don't have a trap down on Willow Street. Because they've, people have been pulling the stakes out, they've lost a tremendous number of. Marker stakes.
Why would they do that?
On the side of the road.
Oh.
Yeah.
I bet it's bad down there. I bet you get a lot of mosquitoes.
People down there that don't wanna be sprayed, I don't understand.
All over the whole district, they've lost.
No, are you talking traps or the markers, the no spray markers?
And they've been missing some traps, not as many.
So people are pulling other people's markers out?
Yes, they've been pulling them out.
I don't even notice the markers on my truck.
And I've forgotten how much she, uh, Carrie, you told me, the cost of those stakes, it's.
I'm sure, it's costly, cause they're.
Crazy.
Yeah, and then they went back out and put them, they found a whole raft of them up in Leicester. Somebody had put them in a whole pile.
Jesus.
It was unbelievable.
Um, mailed out the water reports today. That was a fun chore.
Yeah.
We used to just bring them to the post office and mark them, you know, c- they would code them by air, by streets and stuff, how they do it differently, and. Now the state makes you go, uh, we have to go online. And fill a form out, and tell them how much pieces we have, what the weight is, what the cost is, where they're going. It was like, huh, so, they're gone. Um, Dale Christie planted flowers in the square, that's why I wanted to mention, good stuff, and I knew I had something in there.
Yeah, that looked nice, we drove by the other.
Yeah, the square there, so he put a lot of perennials in and then annuals around, and then, uh.
Yeah.
And then also his mother donated a rose bush, so it does look really nice, and this garden out here looks.
Yeah, it looks great, yeah, and the ones in the triangle for Carol.
Yeah, those are beautiful.
And she cleaned up around the one, um, signed up with the library, too.
Really nice.
Yeah.
Um, and then Wednesday, we're meeting with Jeff Lewis, um, to go over the, um, sludge removal. At the wastewater treatment plant, so.
And when, when do we think reappraisal's starting? We haven't talked about that for a long time, it's kinda while.
Yeah, I don't know, um, I'll have, you'll have to have Lisa, I'll, I'll just ask her, um.
I, I really didn't wanna pay her to come.
Yeah, I know, that's why I'm saying it, um, I don't know, they're, they're, they're just swapping files. And updating everything and stuff, and I don't know when they're actually gonna do the real start of the appraisal, the meet of the project, so.
Maybe if she could just give us a general idea.
Yeah, just a timeline.
Yeah, cause, uh, people are asking about that, they're like, no, I thought we were getting reappraised, and I was like, oh, yeah, we are.
Right.
And then I said, yeah, there was something with the computers and.
Yeah.
And it was like, it seemed like it was, ah, and now it's just.
Yeah.
Gone, so it might be nice to have a little update about it.
And the material they gave us in that booklet, there was a timetable.
Yeah.
They did mention about when it was gonna start, and I don't know how accurate that date.
Yeah, well, that's what I wondered, cause a lot of things have changed.
Yeah, because there's been a lot of hic- hiccups along the way.
Yeah, so maybe just a, a little, yeah, more update, so, yeah. And then just about the pool, the pool's gonna be open, we're gonna open on the eighteen.
Yep, and it's gonna be open from ten to six.
And we're gonna be open Thursday, Friday.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Friday, Saturday, yeah.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, that'll be the days that are always open, though?
Yeah, ten to six, yeah.
And we now, what, six life periods?
Yeah, so. Yeah, I, Maggie's isn't doing it like every day, cause she's working at the hospital, so, but, um, yeah, so that's what we're gonna do. Um. Yeah, I mean, and see, you know, they try to keep kind of a general count of, you know, how many people and. Um, we'll have a boys and girls club here, so they'll go over, I'm sure the.
Yeah, she contacted me today for Thursdays, and then I had a group from Outer Valley that wants to come over Thursday, so I'm gonna try to see if they can come a different day.
Usually Wes Rottlin will come a couple times, maybe Rottlin City, and then the little camp from, uh, the union church, I'm sure will probably go, so. Yeah, I mean, you usually have enough little groups, so, yeah.
Um, and then also, um, shoot, what else was I gonna mention to you? Oh, concerts starting in July.
Yeah, oh, that's right.
So we have two booked in July and two booked in August.
And then the o- other thing for July is, Mornin' Proctor will be due end of July.
Right.
If there are things, I mean. Granted, you're like at the end of the cycle, but if there are things that we wanna ask or try for. We need to kinda be getting our apps together so we can get bids and things, so. I mean, I don't know what that is, but just, that's a thought.
Alright.
Alright, anything else?
Oh, yes. No, OCW.
Yeah.
And that they sprayed on the fourth, like you said in your report, and, uh, the people at twenty-one North Street. The house next door to Franklin's.
Okay.
They called OCW to complain that they said the driver was spraying going by their house, they're in a no spray zone.
Right.
And they do have markers, you know, identifying that.
Yep.
And so OCW, uh, spoke with the driver, and the driver was certain that he did not spray in that area.
Right.
And, uh, uh, the, the sprayers with the new. Uh, data recording, uh, system they have on the sprayer. It, uh, uh, will automatically shut off if the truck is going less than five miles an hour. And it will automatically shut off the sprayer if it's going over for twenty miles an hour.
Okay.
And it, the GPS, uh, data recording, uh, as you're driving your route, and every time the sprayer goes off. It records that, every time the sprayer comes on, it records that, and now the driver substantiated that, he did indeed. And he was certain, stopped before and, and started after, and because he knew the area and he knew. There was some issues between twenty-five Franklin or twenty-five North and, uh, twenty-one. They had to put the marker right on the boundary line, because twenty-five wants to be sprayed.
Right, right.
Twenty-one does not want to be sprayed, and he was fully aware of the, what was going on there, so.
Yep.
He said, yes, no, I did not spray, and I know that for a fact, and then the information was just downloaded. And the downloaded information substantiates that, yes, twenty-one was not sprayed, it was stopped. Before twenty-four, which is, you know, King Corner across the street, and it wasn't started. Uh, until it was well into eleven, which is Tarnover, you know, so.
Well, that's good, they have that data.
Yeah, the people at twenty-one said they are gonna, uh, you know, file complaints with a couple of departments with the state, so. You know, if you hear news about, you know, that, you know, somebody's filing complaints.
Yeah, I saw it on Facebook.
Yeah.
But that's great that they had that, like, data recorder, so to speak, or whatever.
The state's gonna wanna see.
Amount of spray depending on the speed of the truck and.
Maybe that's why when they go around our cul-de-sac, they go, whoosh.
Well, now, again, they used to spray at ten miles per hour, and it was, um, uh, uh. You had to watch the speedometer, you didn't have a governor, you know, so you had to kinda control your speed, so you get the saturation that was needed.
Yeah.
You know, but now with this new one. Because it automatically will adjust, it's computer driven, the saturation level, they'll control the bead size such that if you're driving six miles an hour. It's gonna be a much, uh, a smaller bead than if you're driving eighteen miles an hour, you know, to give you the same saturation. But now, because their range is five to twenty, they tell the drivers, you can drive now at fifteen miles an hour. So now, if you used to see them driving ten, they're gonna be driving now fifteen miles an hour.
It would be nice if they put like a little, um. Google Docs or something together about that, then we could upload and share that, I mean. Cause I don't think a lot of people, I think a lot of people think we are. Like overseeing the spraying. And the reality is, all we're writing, doing is writing a check, we're not collecting mosquitoes, we're not deciding when we spray, we're not deciding any of that stuff. And I just think, like, you have a lot of new people in town, and people are like, I can't even believe you're spraying, you're hot, you know, things like that, I mean. Um, that information like that, informe- like, that's, you know, updated, very current kinda information. That would be great for us to like, you know, they need to make a little mosquito, a little cartoon thing with the guy driving, so, you can share that.
Yeah, but I will stop by the library tomorrow with some brochures, we were giving some brochures at the last meeting.
Sure.
About, you know, how it started and, and, and then one big thing is, you know, going down the OCW website for information.
Yeah, I know, and I know we drive people.
Brochures, and I will bring them down to the town clerk's office, the reason I didn't bring them is there was one, and the, the, under the frequently asked questions. You know, if you wanted, if you were gonna have a family gathering, a function, where you wanted your yard sprayed. To call the OCW, and I just wanted to verify that, we still do that, and while we don't. You know, and it says we do, and so maybe I'll just draw X through that question, or, you know, that answer saying, yes, we do.
I thought we stopped that a long time ago.
Yeah.
I also think, I mean, I, I would appreciate, and I've said this before, every other situation. If people didn't jump on Facebook and complain about the street, because nobody's gonna care, cause nobody's gonna, on Facebook's gonna help them get sprayed. So I would appreciate if people just called me and said, when's the town spraying, why did I get sprayed, why didn't I get sprayed? And stuff like that, cause I don't screen every Facebook post of who got sprayed and who didn't.
Come on.
Plus, if they go and call the OCW, I'm sorry, but they're not gonna get anywhere. So they've gotta call me, I called the OCW twice and they never returned my call, I called them last Tuesday and he finally called me last night.
Oh, they, they've been inundated.
I was just like, I have, one, my first question was, when are we being sprayed, which doesn't matter, cause we were sprayed four days ago. Um, and the other was, I was asking him questions about something else, when I emailed. And said about the people not being, then I got a response back much quicker, like, who didn't get sprayed, what were the streets and stuff like that.
Right, street, yeah, locations would be good to get a report or something.
Right.
Yeah.
But I would appreciate, I mean, I got a notice when Leicester was being sprayed, I didn't get a notice when Proctor was being sprayed.
Oh, so maybe that's something for your meeting on Wednesday night.
Ask them if they could, uh, play a tune like the, the Ding Dong Truck there. So you got one for Leicester?
Yeah, when they did Leicester Salisbury in that area, but not Proctor.
But not.
Maybe they think I work for Leicester, so.
Okay, that's out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, oh, next meeting, I sent out.
That's right.
The tw- on Tuesday, we're gonna meet on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Albert, you got a question?
No, Albert wrote back and said he was good with that.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted.
Okay. Motion to adjourn at seven oh eight would be in order, or motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.